All right. Thank you, Don. Good evening, everybody calling to order the City of North Bend, Washington City Council meeting for February first, 2022 via virtual meeting with the clerk. Please confirm the role.
All council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Rose in your honor.
Thank you.
He is being admitted right now.
Come in, all right. We'll note for the record when he actually arrives. It should be soon enough for the start here. First item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. We have seven items, including payroll and other things along with a resolution and a motion. Can I get a motion? Everybody jump at once.
My motion.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, I believe, by Ms. Cole and second by Mr. Elwood. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And let the record show, Mr. Rosen did arrive for that vote. So that is unanimous, seven up. Citizens comments. At this time, if you're a member of the public and wish to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine on if you've called in on your phone. You'll be called upon. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. And we'll start with your name and address for the record. I'm not seeing any, Don.
No.
Oh, all right. We'll move on. Announcements, presentations, and appointments. No appointments tonight, no announcements tonight in this section, but we do have a presentation. We're very pleased to have with us the Chair of our Parks Commission this evening, Chair Rudd. And please do unmute and go on video. I saw you joining, but there you are for the presentation on the Parks Commission report on 2021 and their 2022 work plan. Thank you for being with us tonight, and we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, and good evening, council members. And on behalf of the Parks Commission, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. It's great to see you, even though virtually at least once a year. As you have been provided a full report prepared by Senior Planner Mike McCarty, my focus will really just be on some of the highlights of our activities last year as well as inviting input on our work plan for this current year. So looking back at 2021, $5,000 was spent from the small park improvement budget, and it helped fund a tennis court backstop at EJ Roberts Park. The Parks Commission was identified as one of the community stakeholders and as such, provided input for the Si View Metro Parks Recreation Program Plan, which was completed early last year. The commission reviewed plans for a proposed art mural at the future wastewater treatment plant, and we provided some recommendations for funding strategies from grants as well as potential community partners for that project. We also reviewed the remaining items on the current Parks Capital Facilities Plan, and we recommended that prioritizing the publicly owned sections of the South Fork Levy Trail would be the next project to pursue. We also reviewed the Tollgate Farm Park to downtown trail proposal and made some recommendations altering the connectivity to future state trails such as the South Fork Levy Trail. We had an opportunity to tour our growing inventory of city parks, and we assessed the maintenance needs. These tours highlighted not only the rapid growth in our area, our beautiful parks, but also a funding and staffing need beyond current levels. The action items to address these to date have included compiling a list of recommended maintenance improvements that has been shared with the Public Works Department. Much progress has already been made thanks to the efforts by the Public Works Crews on this list. And the council actions, thanks to your support through the decision card process, funding has been secured to repave some of the really buckled pathways within our parks, and also funding a full-time Public Works position that will also support park maintenance needs. Thanks again for your support and quick action on these critical needs. These will really enhance not just the user experience, but improve the safety within our parks. We also had an opportunity to do a little bit of community engagement last year through a volunteer event at EJ Roberts Park. This was coordinated by Parks Commissioner Talavich and the Parks Adopt the Park Program, and we hope to do more of these in the coming year. Now, looking ahead to 2022, our priorities include a number of projects, starting with the Parks Commission is needing to provide input for updating the Parks Element of the city's comprehensive plan. And in preparation for this process, what we're looking to do is collect community input through an informal online community survey and hosting event booths at events such as the block party and/or the farmer's market this summer. Together, these with the already available 2021 community survey conducted by Si View, we will have some information that will help us prioritize our recommendations for the Parks Element update. This spring, we'll be coordinating a small commission, either picnic or retreat, whatever you may call it, to do another parks tour where we can fully focus on planning and making a recommendation to staff and council for future use of park maintenance funds. And later this summer, we'll prepare and present any park-related decision cards and a recommendation for use of park impact fees, as well as plan activities for our tree board and the Arbor Day celebration. In the fall, we look forward to coordinating a grand opening celebration with Si View at Tollgate Farm for the renovations at the farmhouse as well as the farmstead project. And throughout the year, we're excited to participate in the master planning process for the William Henry Taylor Park and the Riverfront Park in accordance with the decision card process from last year. And finally, throughout the year, we'll continue to review any park plans for any new developments that might be coming our way. So these are just briefly our priorities going forward, and I'd like to thank you again for your strong ongoing support. It's greatly appreciated, and invite any comments or questions that the council may have for the Parks Commission at this time.
Thank you, Chair Rudd. That's fantastic. I should point out, just so everyone is clear, the official name is the Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission. So they've got a little broader scope of work than we generally recognize. Also, I wanted to point out that in addition to the chair, members of the Parks Commission at this time are Mark Carrera, Kyle Braun, Eric Thompson, Tim Talavich, Luke Duval, and Brian Duncan. And we sure thank all of them for taking part. Counsel? Ms. Cole.
You mentioned that you'll be working on the South Fork Levy and Trail expansion, I guess, and I'm wondering how quickly that will happen and how that will work. I'm excited about it.
That's a wonderful question, and I'm thankful to have Senior Planner Mike McCarty here backing me up. But at this time, staff is reviewing the proposed plans, and the timing of that will need to coincide with any potential levy setbacks by the county. Mike, do you have anything further to add to those?
So on the William H. Taylor Park portion of it, or nothing, I'm sorry, the Riverfront Park portion of it, we'll be starting with the request for qualifications here this spring out to consultants, and that will provide more information back for the park and the potential trail components of it. But then the rest of it, the portion that are potentially on the setback levy, that's a little bit further on down the line. We're applying for grant funding from King County, from the King County River Corridors Grant to do design work for both the levy setback and the trail project. So we're expecting to hear back on that grant probably in about a month, and hopefully with that, we'll be able to go out for some design work for it.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Lodenbeck.
Thank you. Minna, I don't know if Mr. Rosen has reached out to you, but we had a conversation the other day about some enhanced signage directing people to the Veterans Memorial Park next to the City Hall. Have your group done any work on that particular task? And if not, how can we assist you best to make that happen?
Thank you. That is an excellent point. I was not aware of this request. They may have just not reached our commission just quite yet. Our next meeting will be in March. But in the meantime, thank you for bringing that up, and we'll be sure to add that to our future agenda for taking it forward. And I can reach directly out to Councilmember Rose and for ideas on suggested locations for signage and so forth.
Well, I didn't want to get you in any trouble, you know. Reaching out to Mr. Rosen can be problematic sometimes, so be happy. No, it was actually, he and I talked about this idea the other day, and we felt that it was probably within the purview of the Parks Board to really probably take the lead since you're familiar with the standards. And it's something that I think is probably worthy of being doing in the short term, and we can provide funding for signage. And then it just becomes logistics and strategic locations to direct people to that new memorial.
Thank you. You addressed the key point of funding support, so that will that will help expedite any project.
Mr. Regus, is your hand up for staff clarification?
Yeah, I'm just letting the group know that City Public Works Department is already on top of that request, and we've ordered the signs, and they will be placed here in the next couple of weeks. We're working closely with American Legion to do just that.
Great. Thank you very much. Minna, look at that.
Thank you.
Thirty seconds for the project, and you've already you've already solved it.
You already got a win.
There you go.
Mr. Godell.
Yeah, I, in fact, Ross and everybody else, that was going to be my question, whether we can do anything. But I also wanted just to thank you and the committee for all the hard work. You know, it's a volunteer position, and it takes a lot of work and all the effort that you guys do in it. I do appreciate it, and thank you as part of the city for all your efforts.
Thank you very much. We'll be sure to share that with everyone. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Miller.
And I'm going to follow up Alan's comment saying, thank you so much to all of you. I've been very much impressed all through the years, more impressed as the years go by even. So that takes a lot. And my question to you tonight involves elk management. How closely are you working with that operation since they live amongst us as well?
I'm sorry, Mary, you cut off a little bit with elk management?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Did you hear my question? I'm wondering how closely you are in relationship to them when you're thinking forward with parks involved, since they are our neighbors and we are the guests, basically.
Absolutely. We are the guests amongst their home backyard, for sure. And that is another great question and consideration for any future development and maintenance plans of our community parks and something that it's a timely discussion to have as we have the Parks Element update coming up this year. And best practices and management and policies and so forth.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Anyone else? Ms. Cole, back to you.
The Tollgate Farm project is also very exciting, and I see them working on it. So I'm wondering when it will be partially finished, and are we going to have a big party celebrating it?
Great. Yes, we look forward to celebrating together with Si View Metro Parks, Parks Commission, and the city grand opening, hopefully later this year. At this very moment, work has really slowed down at Tollgate Project, and that is due to the ongoing concrete workers' strike impacting all projects around the region at this moment, but hopefully that won't last very long. And with weather and supply issues permitting, late fall is the timeline that we're looking at for a grand opening. So stay tuned for more information.
Question. Not seeing any other hands. Again, Chair, thank you so much for being here tonight. Great report. I did read the written report, all the pictures of things for us to work on. Great to hear that staffs all have many of these things accomplished before you could even report. That's always a good place to be.
You have a wonderful team.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you and to all the commissioners for all the work you do. Appreciate you being with us tonight. Hey, counsel, next on our agenda, item nine, AB 22-018. This is a resolution ratifying the proclamation of emergency. Mr. Miller.
Your Honor, got a question here. I tried to reach out. I have, on all matters related to trash in the past, have recused myself because I do work for a competitor. I reached out. I want to know what Lisa's position on this one and whether I should recuse myself as possibly conflict of interest in this conversation coming forward.
Thank you. Lisa, you're with us.
Sure, if someone could turn the camera on, I'd appreciate it. It looks like it's... Here we go. Yeah, council member, I'm not sure if you have a relationship with the garbage holler that would entitle you to any financial benefit. If that's the case, certainly recusal is appropriate. If no personal or financial benefit, then I would leave that to your discretion.
Okay. In the in the past, we have talked that it could constitute, because I'm in the industry, there's always a chance something could change. So.
If it could constitute, then yes.
If I was on a committee or anything similar that was conflict, I would recuse myself too. So I guess I will recuse myself in accordance of what I've been doing consistently to maintain that I am not of conflict of interest.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Godell. If I'm hearing correctly, you would like to be reclusive when practice that we've been doing. Virtually, we will ask the meeting, Don, if you would move Mr. Godell to the waiting room, we'll bring him back after this item is dispensed with.
He is now in the waiting room.
Okay, I was gonna say disappeared from my screen, so just moved around on me. Okay. Yeah, with that, good point of order, back to the resolution, Mr. Miller. Are you introducing this item or?
Yes, I will. This particular resolution was proposed because of the delays that we had due to both the snow event and the garbage strike. And according to the agreement with Republic, we had some grace period granted to them during the period of the snow event, and a minimum grace period granted to them during the strike. And they, regarding that delay, they were not providing service beyond the grace period. And therefore, we put together a program due to an awful lot of community concern about the rising health issue that resulted from not having their trash haul the way. And we found that Republic was not very responsive because they were not able to resume service. And so we met as an executive team and decided that we needed to provide some relief. So we were able to convince Republic to put some large trash bins in Ferguson Park and to provide enough outreach to provide relief to folks if they could bring their trash to Ferguson. I believe that operated for at least three, if not four days. It ran from, I believe, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then over the weekend. There were a lot of folks that could not reach, get off of work to get rid of their trash and stay open on the weekend. We provided service not only to numerable people from the community, but also people from the surrounding area who sought it to get rid of their trash. I think our cost came somewhere in the neighborhood of cumulatively around $30,000. And then what we've done, and our attorney can probably fill you in a little more on this, but we asked Lisa to review the agreement with Republic and put together a request for reimbursement of funds based upon the amount that was expended by the city for either contractors or city staff were to remove the trash. And Republic was accommodating enough to take the trash away from Ferguson up to Saturday. But on the weekend, they were unable to provide service. So we did work with a private contractor to have storage facilities and hauling facilities to take it off to the transfer station. So Lisa did put together a letter that we delivered to Republic, but we found that because of the severity of the health crisis and the uprising and no resolution in sight for providing relief, that it was an appropriate health and safety event to ask the mayor to issue a proclamation, the emergency proclamation, which he did. And that was done for several reasons, not the least of which is to provide us a legal basis for looking at a remuneration to be paid to the city for the costs that we incurred to help during the trash event. So be happy to answer any questions. Mark Regus was very involved in mobilizing the Public Works crews and in communicating directly with Republic and our city attorney is here, who is working with Republic to seek some remuneration back to the city to cover our costs. So we're all here to answer any questions you have. But I believe that the health emergency was significant enough in terms of the number of communications that we received from the public that we had to act and provide relief.
Thank you. Counsel, I do understand there may be a few questions around this, particularly clarifying the legal language. And so we will want to get to that, considering that there may be some blending of what might be a clarifying question versus debate. I would suggest we first move to seeing if we have any public input, and then we can get a motion on the table. Any objection with that? All right. If you are a member of the public and wish to speak on this item, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine, and we'll call on you. You'd have up to three minutes to speak, starting with your name and address for the record.
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay. Let's see. I think this would most appropriately be addressed by Finance and Administration. Mr. Elwood, would you like to introduce the motion?
Sure, let me find my mouse real quick.
We can go to Public Works. It was discussed there as well.
Almost there. Sure. Okay, I move to approve AB 22-018, a resolution ratifying and confirming January 13, 2022 proclamation of local emergency.
Thank you. I have a second. Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Elwood, did you want to lead any discussion or questions? We do have legal counsel.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and then a comment. But I think my first question is, in reviewing the contract terms, are we, did we violate any terms of the contract with Republic by not giving them enough time to react specifically with the strike or any other time thereafter?
Lisa.
Sure. Regarding the strike, there was no requirement that the city respond to the labor disruption. Certainly, the language in the contract does prohibit us from seeking reimbursement for the first week of the labor disruption. And as you recall, the labor disruption was resolved within that week. So we did not ask for reimbursement due to the labor disruption. However, Republic failed to pick garbage up about eight consecutive days, which entitled the city to theoretically find Republic in default of the contract. Doing so, of course, is problematic because finding Republic in default would place you in a position of having to find a substitute hauler in short order. So the position that the city took was to try to recoup all of the expenses that the city incurred due to trying to find a substitute, in addition to some performance fees that we assessed against Republic for a total of about $29,000 and some change. So our view is that the city did not violate any notice requirements in the contract, but certainly Republic is, they did, you know, put the city in a position of incurring these fees.
Thank you. The next one to me is about the policy or the protocol and how this rolled out. My reaction, I learned about that we were in a state of emergency because of our website notification. I'm on City Council. I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee, and nobody called me. I had no idea. There was no heads up. I know we try to operate from a no surprise rule, but honestly, that surprised me. I felt that there was something better that should have happened. Could you possibly walk us through what the protocol is to follow when declaring a state of emergency? Should there be an emergency council meeting, any of that type of thing? I mean, I would like the refresher, and we also have new colleagues here that haven't gone through this yet. So perhaps it might benefit all of us to just have that listed for us if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. The emergency language in the public bidding statute, 3904, allows the city to declare an emergency, which allows the city to seek relief without having to go through the time and necessary steps of following the public bidding laws. So here, the declaration of emergency was narrowly focused to get around those bidding laws, allow us to retain a substitute garbage hauler to start moving garbage out of the city on short order. Certainly, there are a couple of ways to do that. One would be to call a special meeting with 24 hours' notice and have the council vote on the declaration of emergency. That's certainly one way. Another way is given the mayor's broad authority vested within that office, he is entitled to also declare the emergency. An equally viable way of doing it, the bidding laws in 3904 contemplate the possibility that it may not be possible to convene a special meeting in 24 hours' notice, particularly if there is decorum. And so if that is the case, which I'm not sure necessarily occurred here, but if that is the case, certainly the mayor would have the authority to declare an emergency. Could it have been done either way? Yes. Oftentimes, in these cases, we're working on short notice, and you know, hindsight is 2020. So I'll stop there and allow the mayor to make any remarks he may wish to.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate the legal overview. And I think there is two pieces to the question being posed or the comment being made. And Councilmember Elwood, as we discussed directly, there was a miss in contacting you. I had asked the Public Works Director to reach out to all four chairs of the committees. There was an expectation, although I will say I left it unsaid, that in those conversations, the requests would be made to the chairs to talk to the remaining members of those committees so that all seven would be informed and know what was being contemplated, what was coming. There was one additional miss that affected you directly in that because we were at the start of the year and had just changed committee chairs for committees, I was thinking of the previous chair, and I know that he was contacted, but that was an oversight directly to you. And for that, of course, we apologize. So in that regard, procedurally, as I've always done in the past and always intend to do, to provide as much outreach to council members in a situation like this as time would allow for, and certainly to get that consultation and feedback.
Yeah, the extension to that, and thank you for that, is what I didn't hear in the protocol, and probably appropriately so, is that if you can't have an assembly of all councils for an emergency council, it's the communication after the fact to make sure that all council members are aware of what's going on in any state of emergency. And I don't know if that's And I don't know if that's something that needs to be added to that protocol or if it just becomes more of an agreed upon. Action item, but I, but I would leave it to all of us to recognize that going forward. It's just, it's just, you know, you hear about it on the website. That's great, they're making decisions without me, appreciate it. Okay, I'll, I'll yield the floor now to anybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Longback, I saw your hand. You're muted.
Sorry, your honor, it was just a hand gesture.
Okay, Mr. Rosen.
Yeah, Lisa, can you also give us a little background or understanding on? What we're kind of voting on tonight because it's already occurred and I'm not questioning, I just. Want to fully understand since it seems the events have already occurred and what the ramifications are of our votes tonight.
Thank you, because that is an important point that I failed to mention in my first, my former remarks. And that is when there is a proclamation of emergency and a contract is let. During that emergency, the city council is required to ratify. Any contracts that were entered into in that emergency situation within two weeks of the contract award. And here that was Jorgensen Resources and Recycling that did the substitute hauling for the city.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
My question, Lisa, is that was a union strike outside of our area, San Diego. And I am speculating that they were using the holidays and they couldn't possibly know that we had these snow events as well, but. How does that work with an out of state? Group incorporated into our state, it just felt. Really bad.
Well, from my understanding, and again, this is not necessarily a legal observation, but just one. From doing the homework in preparation for the emergency ordinance. The, sorry, the emergency proclamation, my understanding is that although the. Union is based in California, there is a local chapter here in Washington and that local chapter informed. The members that there was a strike and that, of course, bled into. The members in our state, so my assumption is that the local chapter is, was aware of a snow event, although I, I cannot say that with a hundred percent certainty.
Mr. Rosen.
Not sure if this is the right place, but I'll ask. It can be at the end of the council, maybe if you want, your honor, can you give us an update where we're at regarding this garbage issue? As far as credits or anything along those lines with, for our citizens, I think some mammoths has had some. Some success there, I'm not sure if this is the right place to ask it, I can put it out there and we can talk about it later, so.
It's a very short answer, so I'm happy to provide it within now, at this time and, and our legal counsel wrote the letter. We did write a letter to Republic with our expectations for reimbursement. And also very strong suggestion of what they should be doing for our residents, the, they, well, frankly, residents and commercial. Their customers as far as credits. They have acknowledged receiving that letter and have forwarded to their legal counsel, we've not as yet. To my knowledge, received a reply unless Lisa got something very late today.
No, nothing yet.
All right.
No, no good news for us, huh, Lisa?
No, but that means no new, no new news may be good news, we don't know.
We'll take it, thank you both, I appreciate the answers.
Any other questions? Okay. With that, the motion before you is to approve AB twenty-two dash zero one eight, a resolution ratifying and confirming January thirteenth. Twenty twenty-two proclamation of local emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, I would say the motion carried six zero, Mr. God help was excused and was reclusive from the meeting. And if you would bring him back now, please. God help, do we have you back? I see a screen image, but not you. There he is. Okay, welcome back, next on our agenda is item ten, AB twenty-two dash zero one nine. This is a resolution, city-owned property in the Meadowbrook U-Lid. Mr. Regos, where are you? There you are.
I'm here, thanks, thanks, Mayor, good, good evening, counsel. Yeah, page fifty-three. Page fifty-three in your packet. And for this Meadowbrook sewer U-Lid staff has been working on this off and on this particular. Project for the past couple of years, we've had a work study on it recently. There's been a couple city council meetings where we've discussed the city of the U-Lid. Back several months ago, there was petitions that had started coming in August, September, October. And ultimately, the petitions from the private property owners exceeded fifty percent. Slightly, it was fifty-three percent and that was non-city-owned properties. Some of the studies that have gone on to date, just for the group's benefit, is a conceptual engineering design by Grant Osborne. There was an engineer's estimate of several different ways to design the project. There was also an appraisal report done by consultant Silva Consulting that was in early two thousand twenty-one. So at this point, this is really just about whether or not the city-owned parcels. Will be included in the U-Lid, no matter what the boundary could be. There's four or five city-owned parcels that are quite large and quite are located right in the middle of the, of the U-Lid, so. With that, that kind of concludes my, my presentation, we're all very familiar with it and happy to answer any questions and. I think Mike Kenyon is, is available as well, if not, Lisa can probably answer, answer some questions too.
Now, we do, and we do have Mike here with us, he's the one closest to this. And I do for the benefit of the public and I will be calling, see if we do have anyone wishing to speak. But I do want to make sure the public is very clear. Tonight's conversation is just around city property being a part of the U-Lid. It is not whether or not the city is moving forward with a particular U-Lid. Including the one that, that we have received some petitions on, so that's not what's in tonight's conversation. Any, any other clarifying question from council about what tonight's action is before we move to the public? Mr. Elwood.
Thank you, so, Mr. Kenyon. How does deciding if the city property? Properties should be included in this U-Lid as is proposed? Impact any future decision-making, whether it be on the proposed U-Lid that we have in front of us that we're considering over the next couple of weeks? Or some future state potential U-Lid?
You're muted.
If I understand the question correctly, I mean, if, if this resolution is adopted tonight, then by its terms. City property and what's known as the Meadowbrook area will be included in. Any U-Lid that's formed out there, as long as the boundaries of that U-Lid include the city properties. The AB discusses, it's theoretically possible to create a U-Lid out there, the boundaries of which would not include city property, but as a practical matter, that's unlikely to occur.
And so I think if I could clarify, Mike, you mentioned the first qualifier. Provided the city-owned parcels were within that U-Lid boundary, seems obvious. Second one is if we first had signed petitions by private property owners that were a majority. I see that as part of, this is, that's in the resolution, is that correct?
It is. And that's a reflection of my understanding, the staff's understanding of. Counsel comments and responses when Mark and others have brought up in the past that. The existing petitions do include a majority of the private property in the, within the proposed boundaries.
Yeah. Okay, if you, Mr. Jost, I see your hand up, will you?
Yes, I just want to flip the question, Mike, so what happens if this motion fails this evening? Where does that leave counsel?
Right, if this, if the motion fails, again, as a practical matter and as a legal matter, frankly, as things would stand. The signed petitions do not include a majority, the owners of a majority of the area within the U-Lid. So the council would not have the authority to initiate that U-Lid by petition. We briefly discussed before, there's another method in the statute where the council can initiate a U-Lid by council resolution, but. That's a discussion for another meeting if, if we get to that.
And then, Mike, if you're, you're what you're clarifying is that the current petition wouldn't be able to move forward. Would another petition would exclude it though, city theoretically be possible?
It's theoretically, I mean, it's certainly theoretically possible. The question is, we talked about the last couple of meetings is. Those petitions come in, the petitions are required by statute to have a depiction of the proposed U-Lid area, the boundaries of the U-Lid area. So first question would be, are there city parcels included? If so, then within the boundaries, if so, do we add those parcels to the U-Lid area? If the city parcels are not included within the boundaries on the petition, then. As Mark described a couple of weeks ago, we'd start with new engineering study, new appraisal, special benefits study to see if. The new proposed area would, would pencil, that is, would there be a special benefit?
Thank you. Mr. Elwood.
Yes, and I, and I'm sorry that I've had, asked you these questions so many times, Mike, and I have a series more of questions that we'll be going through again, but. I just got a little bit more confused. When, if I'm understanding it right, without the city inclusion, there's a majority of property owners. In total, that want the U-Lid, so it could move forward without the city property included, that's not right, correct?
That, that's, yeah, cor- correct, it could not move forward. The threshold, the threshold question in the statute is, are the petitions signed by? The owners of property aggregating a majority of the total area. So if you look at the total area within the proposed U-Lid boundary now, without the city signatures. There does not aggregate a majority of the total area. The private property owners, a majority of the private property owners have signed. But you have to include the city properties because the city properties are included within the boundaries shown on the petition.
All right, with that, let's move to public comment, Don, do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item?
We do, Wendy Miller, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Great, thank you, Wendy Miller at six eight one four Denny Peak Drive Southeast, Snoqualmie, Washington. We are also the owners of one four two two Bendigo Boulevard North. My statement here is, again, we're here to present to the city council why there's a need for sewer. In the Meadowbrook area and why the city should vote to have their parcels participate to move the U-Lid forward. This conversation has been ongoing, not just over the last few years as we've petitioned this U-Lid, but over eighteen years. There are some that say developers should pay for development, so therefore we should have to pay to install the sewer. The majority of property owners in the U-Lid are happy to, we've been begging for it. I'd like to remind the council, this is exactly why U-Lid exists. It was created by municipalities for this very reason, it exists because it is not feasible unless you're building hundreds of homes. A majority of multi-use, a major multi-use development, or you personally have hundreds of millions of dollars. To hundreds of millions of dollars, so a seven million dollar hit to your little project is no big deal. You're all educated people and you all realize that a small business owner can't just go to a bank and get a loan to build a sewer line that doesn't bring any cash flow to the business owner. U-Lids exist so that cities control the decision to bring necessary utilities to homes and businesses in their city. They sell bonds to fund it and all of the users pay for it. It's the city's job to provide these necessities, this is truly one of your main jobs. We've heard recently that some of the council, regardless of the fact that we've had several residential owners sign petitions to bring sewer to the properties. The council is concerned that a handful of residential owners will incur high assessment fees and therefore the entire U-Lid should be scrapped. How about we find ways to mitigate some of their costs over a period of time or until they sell their properties or want to redevelop? How about if we find solutions rather than continuing to punish those? That need the sewer so they can build their businesses and in turn bring jobs and tax revenue to the city. My project alone, if I'm able to develop the entire project. Will bring over eighteen million dollars in economic impact to the city of North Bend on an annual basis. But that is cut by two-thirds if I can't develop the second half of my property and I can't without sewer. For eighteen years, owners in this area have been asking for sewer to their properties, the previous mayor promised it to us all. He and the city council couldn't deliver in the sixteen years he held office. As I've asked many times before, I hope the city makes the right decision for the majority. The environment and the economic viability of this city, thank you very much.
Thank you. Don, do we have anyone else?
We do not.
All right, thank you, Mr. Longback, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, your honor, a resolution to approve AB twenty-two dash oh one nine, authorizing the mayor to sign a petition. In a form and content approved by the city attorney. To include city-owned parcels within any proposed sewer ULID. In the Meadowbrook area regardless of the actual boundaries of the proposed sewer ULID, provided that A. The area of the proposed sewer ULID is, as depicted on the petition includes the city-owned parcels and B. Only after the petition is first signed by the owners of the property constituting, can, I'm sorry. Constituting a majority of the private property within the area of the proposed sewer ULID and that is a mouthful.
Thank you for the motion, do I have a second?
I'll stop.
I have a second by Ms. Miller, yes, that may be. The longest motion that I'm aware of, at least for this council, that's, that, that was a mouthful. Mr. Longback, without having to repeat that entire motion as came through your committee, would you like to tell us about the committee's conversation, your comments, please?
Well, our, our conversation greatly mirrored the conversations that we've had, not only in, in committee, but in the work study in that. We all realized that, you know, helping to develop this area for the businesses that can help move the city forward, keep taxes down for everybody. And basically provide the needed infrastructure in this area of the city. Is something that's included in our comprehensive plan and is vital to us moving forward as a community. We have, we have the ability to include the city properties and that's the gist of this resolution. That we're saying that not only do we believe in this through our comprehensive plan. We also believe that the city should be an active participant. And that participation would entail us making a commitment via this resolution. To be a part of any ULID in whatever form comes forward. Moving forward as long as those properties are within the jurisdictional boundaries of the ULID. I think that's pretty straightforward, it's not. Co-flating any other issues or trying to muddle the waters in any way, all we're saying is that we believe. In the ULID as a city and we believe that if it goes forward, we should participate. As a city in that ULID and I would recommend to do pass.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, you were the second, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't have anything more to add, he articulated a, a, a huge fragment of what I would have said, so thank you for that, Ross, and would recommend it pass.
Thank you very much. Counsel? Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, um, I'll start off with simple statement, in general, as I said, I think last time we had a work study. That I am in support of the city's participation. With one condition, which is finding a way to get the residential properties removed. Since that conversation, I had an opportunity to exchange some emails of Mr. Kenyon. I think back on January eighteenth. explained to me the email that it is perfectly legal and possible for us to remove those residential properties from the ULID. The reason I bring in that particular part of my conversation tonight, talking about residents, when we're talking about just supposedly the city participation, is that was my condition of support, and I can support the ULID fully with that as my one condition. In order to get there, I would like to see if this council maybe tonight would put, maybe as some assurances that we will try to get the residential properties removed from the ULID. As I said, legally, we can absolutely do it, there's no problem there. And that would spare those residents who want to opt out quite, quite the burden. So this is a large blanket approval of, we don't, undetermined financial amount with undetermined boundaries. I think that's a fair ask to get some assurances on the residential side before we give such a blanket approval. So I would look to my fellow council members and ask them maybe for some help tonight, and see if we can find some language that we can insert here that will look after just the residential properties. And let's see if we can get this done tonight in general terms, so we can give some clear guidance to those out there, the commercial properties that are trying to move forward, that the council is behind this, is supportive, and does want to get this done, because it is a benefit to the whole city, I do not doubt that. And I do want to see this pass, but I do just want to find a resolution to this one issue. And as I said, this is a pretty big blanket approval, and if we can get some assurances there, I certainly would be on board. That's all tonight.
If I could just add a clarification, it certainly is legal to remove the residential properties and otherwise adjust the boundaries of the proposed ULID. But as was discussed at the work study, I think Mark gave us a back-of-the-onboard estimate of $25,000 to $30,000 that we would need to do to revise the engineering and revise the appraisal to make sure it's still pencils. That would add four to six months was our back-of-the-onboard estimate. So it is legal, but it doesn't just happen automatically. Some other steps that are required.
And I would, again, and Mr. Rosen knows this well, he and I talked about it just today. The, the, this is not about whether residents are in or out, and I've already agreed that we're looking for opportunities for that. This is about whether the city property takes a part of it, as was expressed earlier, and is specifically the, the action of the motion. And so I would like you to take that into consideration. This is not a vote on, on the formation of the ULID. I want to continue to make sure that everyone, particularly the public, is clear on that. Any action taken tonight is not on the formation of a ULID. Any other council members? Mr. Elwin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I prepared a statement, and I'm going to read it. And there'll be some questions in there. And I'm glad that one of the applicants said the words, "Let's look for solutions to mitigate", because that's exactly what's, what's driving my, let's really consider this seriously, folks. So as I've said in the past, I support the ULID formation for the property owners who want it, specifically those who use their land for commercial benefit, and for those who reside in the proposed area who also want it. That said, I believe there is a critical consideration we must explore. One key argument as to why it should be passed as proposed is that all of the property owners within the district should be viewed as equal in this action, their property owners. I respectfully challenge that position. It became very clear to me upon reading what property owners would be assessed and what benefits functionally are, that we should not consider them to be equal because there are too many inequities, inequalities to ignore. For examples, the proposed district itself is clearly divided by different uses in zoning, which means the land use is not the same for everyone. They are different. There are property owners who use their land for commercial purposes, and those who use their land for residential purposes, they are different. There are active businesses who have the ability, whose ability to pay for the costs are tied to their business's revenue, whereas though, whereas those, those who's, who use their property for residential purposes, such as those on fixed incomes, do not have the same ability to pay for these costs. They are different. The businesses will be able to recoup, absorb, and pass on this expense to their customers. Residential property owners do not have that ability. For example, they need to assume debt, become a developer to subdivide their existing property, or sell their property. They are different. This becomes an even bigger issue for those property owners who live on 8th Street. They, because they reside in neighborhood business zoning, can't even subdivide to assume those costs. No more homes can be built along that street. In fact, only a business can go there. Thus, these citizens specifically will have to sell their property to assume their costs. But there's another layer to contemplate here. Because of the river flooding and environmental impacts, it is likely that no project, no business can pencil, we like that term, pencil out for them. More to the point, the amount of land that may be available for a business to go in there will be miniscule. They are different. These differences are real and hard to ignore. Yet, we're being asked to ignore them simply because the applicants, those who use their property for businesses, are only proposing a ULID that assumes all property are equal. It ignores the reality of the inequalities because it is of a benefit for them to do so. I understand this. However, I must consider these differences in my decision because these property owners are not all equal. They are different. The city has said that they are neutral in this decision, but they are not pushing this. They have said that we need to decide based on what the applicants have proposed. I have trust for that to be the case. Mr. Kenyon, would I be accurate in saying that the city is relatively neutral in this decision?
I think the city has taken a neutral position with the small c caveat, if you look at the resolution, that the comp plan, the sewer comp plan, and much of the city's planning documents support sewer. But one way or another, support sewer.
Great, thank you. I must impress my colleagues that this, this is kind of forcing us to make a decision tonight that pushes us into an, into a corner. And I know we're not approving the actual ULID itself, but this particular decision is a, is a step forward in that. And, and I worry that there's something that we're missing from this. And so if we support the ULID, it ignores the inequality of it and the hardships that will fall upon a number of citizens. If we oppose it, we're ignoring the businesses who want this benefit and are there, and are entitled to it. So it's a, we kind of make it, lose it either way. Perhaps I'm too simple in my thinking, but it seems to me that if there were guarantees, the property owners could opt out at this time, for example, pay when they wish to connect, that would solve this conundrum, and more importantly, be equitable. But as the city has said, the applicants don't want to do this because it means more cost to them. Mr. Regos has walked us through the scenarios about paying for lift stations, piping across the river, tearing up roads, also, all of that. Or if you separate the property owners by how they are currently using their land, how they recoup their costs, you will see two distinct groups of people. Those that use business, those that use for business seem to be in the majority supporting the ULID amongst that business group. Those who use their property for residential, specifically on 14th and 8th Street, are in the majority among the residential group that oppose the ULID. These two groups are divided. That seems a common theme, the theme these days. Maybe there's a Shakespearean lesson here. If we've answered a few of these questions, which is great, so the city is not necessarily a swing boat, am I take that correct, Mr. Kenyon? And what I mean by that is that the ULID can form if the city was not included in the ULID district. If it was included in the ULID district, it, we'd need the ULID, we'd need the city approval to pass.
A ULID can be formed, in theory, without the city parcels to be included. But I just, backing up to the threshold and the statute, whatever the boundaries are of a proposed ULID, the petitions have to reflect the signatures of the owners aggregating the majority of that property. So that's why for the, and again, as Rob keeps saying correctly, this is not a question about whether or not the form a ULID. But with respect to the proposed ULID, the city properties would need to be in it. That's not the question tonight. The question tonight is, if there's to be a ULID formed out there, where the boundaries of which do include city properties as a policy matter for the council, are the city properties in or out? That's the question tonight.
Great, thank you. So is it possible to amend tonight's resolution to include language or provisions that ensures property owners who do not want to be a part of the ULID, such as those along 14th and 8th, but do, do want to join at a later date, can be amended to this already lengthy resolution or motion that Mr. Lundbeck struggled through?
We can amend the resolution to say anything the majority of the council wants, but I think there's, the, the concept that you're discussing, Brendan, and I think it's come up before, is, is a bit of mixing apples and oranges. So there, there are at least two separate ways to put sewer in out there. I mean, there's a third, the third is, the city could just fund it, but obviously, we don't have that capacity right now. There are two other ways. One is a ULID. That's where all of the properties that are in the boundary get assessed, even those who don't want to be assessed. The other, and with the concept you're talking about, is a latecomers agreement. But the two don't mix. The latecomers agreement, let me just use Ms. Miller, if I could, as an example. She could choose to pay for and install all of the facilities necessary to run sewer to her property. She would pay every dime of that. Then there would be a latecomers agreement where people who subsequently hook up do pay her back at that point. But that's different than a ULID where every property within the boundaries is in fact assessed. So, long way of saying the answer to your direct question is, we can't have a situation where ULID boundaries come in, and then people get to opt out, or if we do have that situation, we have to revise the engineering and the appraisal to make sure that the properties within the new boundaries still pencil.
I think that's where it gets tricky on this, because I don't want to be gut punched down the road that we've approved this based on the merit, should they be in or out? I understand that. What I'm concerned about is there, there's something that we're missing here on including them in or out. And I want to make sure that, no, I get it, it seems to be crystal clear, but I'm just worried about it. But to me, it seems like there could be a way to have some sort of protections to allow for folks that can opt out at a later date. I mean, I, the work study, I thought it's pretty clear that there was some interest in understanding reassessments and things like that, so I was a little surprised that we're here now making this decision, because my takeaway from that meeting is that we were going to have some sort of sense of it, but it could be mistaken on that. I'll yield at this time, thank you.
So I'll get to you, Mr. Rosen, Mr. Elwin. Again, it feels like we're regurgitating previous conversations there. Mr. Rosen?
Yeah. I, I think the problem I'm, I'm having with this tonight, and it's going to be the same problem, I think the public has, if you look at this and you're not part of this conversation, it appears that the city is agreeing to participate in ULID and move it forward, and that the residents' concerns may not be addressed. And I think a public statement of some sort addressing that would be helpful, not only for myself and for the other council members, but honestly, more for the residents who are looking at this, trying to understand what we're doing here tonight. And I think that's something I hope that the seven of us can figure out tonight, some sort of public assurance, something to them say, hey, we do understand, there are tools we have available to us to rectify this, and we are committed to working towards that. I know that would make me happy, but I think most importantly, it would ultimately make those residents out there much more comfortable with what's going on. And that's what I'd like to find a simple solution to tonight. And I think if we do that, honestly, there's a 7-0 vote here tonight. The applicants can move forward with confidence that this project's going to get done, and the residents out there are going to be much more comfortable with where we go in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I didn't come prepared. I thought this would be a slam dunk up and down. It's the most basic of questions. What does a city council do? The reason they're cities is because people need someplace to put their waste. You know, go back in time to the very beginning of what drove people to come together and participate in joint governance to some point such that there's a joint benefit that we all, that accrues to all of us. And here we are in city council empowered, it's in these moments that we are here together as a group, that we get to make decisions that, yes, absolutely impact people's lives. My goodness, do they ever. But it's also true that the city, I mean, this, this parcel of land, I think, is in the comp plan in 2008. This has been going around forever. You folks, you've been doing this so much longer than me. I'm hesitant to even step in and weigh in and provide some opinion, but it seems to me that the city has been on this path in terms of Meadowbrook for a very long time, with good intention and good people involved, and lots of interest in the citizens and commercial interest of petition. The city say, boy, it's time for us to put sewer in out here, and for the city to, anyway, impede that effort and continue to put staff over and over and over through hoop after hoop after hoop to try and appease. I'm not sure quite who, it's, we're a city, folks. This is the business we're in. We build sewers. You know, and, and I believe Wendy, when she says there's some, this was touched on 18 years ago? I'm sure it was. And here we are yet again, heaven and ha, and, you know, and there are ways that these things happen. Mike has spoken eloquently to, here's the options, here's the, it's, there's case law in this, you know, how this works and why people are assessed what they are and how that accrues. And I mean, and my understanding is even once this is laid, if an individual homeowner wants to hook up to the sewer, it's going to be $14,000 out of pocket to connect individual home. Nobody's on this thing until they pay a connection fee, and that includes the city's properties. You know, it is very hard to discern and tease apart, but the question before us tonight, folks, is, should the cities, you know, should it drink its own medicine? Should it participate in the governance that it expects others to participate in? Should, should not our own parcels be a party to that which is being created to do what? Provide good, healthy, I've got notes all over the place, you know? Read what was written in the motion tonight, you know, providing sewer collection Meadowbrooks, where ULID area will contribute necessary funds to retire the bonded indebtedness? We hadn't even touched on that. The facility to deal with this has been paid for, and part of the model to pay for it is connection fees that come from Meadowbrook, you know? This isn't interconnected, this isn't just, this didn't just pop up out of nowhere. The foundation, the groundwork, all the work and effort that's gone in to get us to this point is, you know, beyond, nearly beyond measure. But the city has an obligation to deliver quality public services, and that starts with sewer. And there are ways, and there are paths, and, but you can't expect to promise to have it all fixed. In this context, at this point, I can't get over it that we're having this conversation. I'll just, I'll stop, but the, it's an obligation of this city to participate in this ULID, plain and simple. I don't see how you argue it any other way. I'm strongly in favor, and I hope we can pass it this evening and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cullen. I saw your hand up.
Oh, Jonathan and Brennan, I hear what you're saying, but this is a very important infrastructure that we need to put through, and you're never going to get 100% consensus, and you're never going to have everybody able to be comfortable paying for it. And I have been one of those people in the past. And as a city council, as Jocelyn said, as a city, you have to move forward and do what's best for the majority, and we need to move forward in the future and stop living in the past. Septic tanks and drain fields are not the way to be. So I'm ready to move forward and vote for this.
Mr. Gottle?
Couple of things I'd like, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I too agree that this ULID, I'd like to see it move forward. But I understand the concerns of my council members who are voted by the constituents to make decisions on policy. It is not the mayor's decision, so I'm sorry that the mayor promised something in the past that was within the council's direction. I would love to see us come to a 7-0 vote tonight to move this forward with some comfort feelings for my fellows, council members, that we will figure a way to at least address the constituents that they spoke to's concern. I don't think that's asking too much. I don't think we're advocating anything or saying it's not a good thing, and I present some of the conversation to that matter. I think what we're trying to do is follow a response by constituents who vote us into office, who had direct conversation with two of our council members and have concerns. These, these constituents were not These can these constituents were not made aware of this conversation tonight. And I think the concern is, is we feel like I think what they feel like is if we agree to this portion of it, there's no other avenue for us to fight for the citizens' concerns, which is what we're supposed to do. So what I'd like to do is see us somehow make sure that we have something in writing that says, okay, we want the city to go in this, but we're going to work to try to, you know, come up with what concerns the residents are that both council members had direct conversations and make sure they're in during our discussions here about the Ulid and understand what's taking place here. I don't think that's asking too much. And I think during the work study, it was clear that most councils said if we need to spend the money to redo it because it's the right thing for the for the citizens, we do it. So I would love to see something that's going to push us to a seven oh vote that these council members understand that we're not just abandoning uh, those constituents that made their concerns now.
Mr. Justin, I've seen your hand up. I think it's from the previous. Did you have a new comment? No. Okay, Mr. Lautenbach, this is your motion. We've kind of gone around the horn. I'd like to see if you're where you're at.
I'm sorry, I did. I did have a comment, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Yelled it to you, Mr. Jocelyn.
I'm sorry for being slow. I think you're using the wrong vehicle. I think the time to be against the Ulid is when the Ulid comes before this body for a vote, and that's not what this vote is tonight. The vote tonight is a policy matter and whether or not city has parcels that if a Ulid is formed, should be included within the boundaries of that Ulid. It's really simple. It's really clear and straightforward to me. So uh, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Lautenbach, back to you.
That's exactly correct. Um, the thing is while we can be responsive to individuals within the proposed ULID, uh, we have to also be responsive to the entire population and the consequences uh, for the entire community of us not participating. And uh, and those businesses that have expressed interest in in developing and being able to get up and running and start generating the revenues that we would hope that they would do and the jobs and all the other things that are going to be vital to our local economy uh, have to be taken into consideration. Now, uh, if you're looking for possible mitigation and solutions and stuff like that, you can propose a solution like uh, if you want to have the city pay for the uh, the assessments for those individuals and put it on the backs of all the other taxpayers in the city, go ahead. Spreads it even. Perfect equity. But, you know, there might be eight thousand or so people in the city of North Bend that might have another opinion on that. Nobody wants to be assessed. But in this case, we have an area of the city that is sorely in need of a vital utility. And it needs to go forward, and I fully intend to support the city participating no matter what version of the ULAD comes forward. And if you guys who are talking about being concerned about the individuals want to give us your scenario for how that happens with the individuals, if you want to pick up their tab as the city, make your proposal. Otherwise, tonight's really about no matter what comes forward, if anything comes forward, that the city would be a willing participant in a vital infrastructure project to service its properties. And I think that is the salient question.
Mr. Elwood?
That's point, point well taken on on all of these accounts. All I'm simply saying is that adding in extra assurances with this resolution to make sure that we have some sort of contemplation or at least some wording that there will be equitable determination at a later date is a good thing. I don't see how that's a bad thing. I mean, it's just a few extra words to a very lengthy amendment, and I don't know what that exact language is. But the city should be included in the Ulid, provided that there are, uh, let's see again, I don't even know the language, that there are options or avenues for um, citizens who do not want or property owners who do not want to be part of that Ulid um, made available to them. See, I don't even know what the right word is. That's why I'd have to lean on you, Mr. Kenyon, because you're a brilliant wordsmith. But the point is, I'm just saying that having some sort of addition to that that motion makes me feel comfortable, make me sleep at night, like there's not going to be a snake going to bite me in the grass later, but that's all I'm trying to say. And I do understand.
Again, and too, so 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 let me let me address that because you keep we we're 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 really circling wagon over and over here, right? Um, to the two council members who 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 are continuing to bring this concern forward. I hear you. I understand it. If you're looking for a statement from the mayor uh, on on that I am committed to looking for solutions for those who are in the residential areas that are concerned, I've made that commitment. I'm making it here again tonight. Uh, you know, in this public forum. That is another question. What I'm looking for tonight is a decision by council on this uh, portion of whether we should be a part of any Ulid that might form so that I know how to move forward. Uh, if we can, and you know, what that Ulid might be so that we can turn all of our attention to trying to solve these reasonable questions being raised. Yeah, um, Mr. Justin, I'm confused again. I don't know if you're holding your hand.
Oh, no, sorry.
All right. Thank you. Um, so again, I I've heard a couple of hints at the idea of a motion. If there is an amendment being offered, uh, I feel we're at that point. It's up to the uh, uh, council member that um, made the original motion. But, you know, I I think everyone has expressed themselves. If there is a an amendment, I would suggest we get that on the table so that we can find resolution this evening. Mr. Elwood?
So with that amendment, essentially articulating what you just said, which is on the city, you know, side of it, that um, you the city should be included in a Ulid district provided that there are reason, there's a reasonable um, attempt. I don't know how to do the right words or you said it pretty well, Mayor. But there's a reasonable attempt or action uh, on the side of the city to make sure that there is equitable solutions mitigating these type of issues or something to that nature.
Well, let me be clear. I'm not suggesting an a an amendment to uh, this this resolution was very carefully crafted. I approved every clause in it. I think it is the correct motion. I'm suggesting if you're looking for a um, a statement officially from me, I'm happy to provide that and I'm happy to um, um, move forward, looking for those ways to address those concerns. I see that as a very separate question from what's before us tonight because this motion is not about forming a Ulid.
I I understand that, but Mr. Kenyon, is that something that can be made into a friendly amendment?
Well, certainly the council can amend the resolution. Given what appears to be a reasonably uh, close split on the council here, I would recommend a formal amendment and second rather than a friendly amendment. And also, it's not, it's not clear to me. I I just pulled up the resolution, but it's not clear to me actually what the text and substance of the amendment should be. So that would be up to the motion maker. I certainly wanted to try to refine that, but I I don't have a good sense yet of what it would be.
Look to either Mr. Rosen or Mr. Elwood, you.
Mr. Elwood, I would, yeah, I would certainly support what where you're going with that. Um, let's get the wording, see if um, if we can figure something out and put that on there and see if there's support for it and let's get it done.
Yeah. I'm trying to think of the words.
And the wording you had, I thought, just a moment ago seemed to touch upon it, uh, which is, I I wish I jotted it down as you said it. I didn't. Um, I don't think we, yeah, the only way would be to hit rewind. Um, and I don't. So yeah, you touched upon it and it was something along the lines of all, you know, reasonable attempts made to accommodate or something I wish I had wording in front of.
Provided that the city considers reasonable avenues.
Point of information?
Yes. Mr. Justin.
Mr. Kenyon proposed a formal amendment, which I think needs explicit language that gets integrated into the text that's been provided to us this evening in terms of this evening's motion. Perhaps the mayor needs to call the recess such that people can, you know, come together and come up with whatever language they think should be inserted in here. But it's inappropriate to be fumbling through it at this point in the evening, I think, trying to decide how to rewrite this explicit text that's come before us this evening for action.
Point taken. Um, and I I do appreciate the notion. That's what I'm asking for is a uh, succinct motion. Um, I do not uh, favor calling a recess. This is nothing new. Mr. Rosen, you've got language. I'm sure you can offer, Mr. Elwood, you've got language. We don't need to, we don't need to fumble around here.
No, I I agree. Um, and I think Mr. Kenyon was about to say something, but you're on mute, sir.
Well, let me, a- and my advice for thirty six years has been, you know, don't don't often legislate from the floor. As I said earlier, I'm not sure I understand exactly what what you're you're getting at Brendan and Jonathan, but let let me propose something.
You went on mute again, Mike.
All right, we, I'm looking at section one of the resolution. And as you see, it it ends with provided that subparagraph A, the area the proposed sewer Ulid is depicted on the petition includes city-owned parcels. Subparagraph B, only after the petition is first signed by the owners of property constituting a majority of the private property within the area proposed with the sewer Ulid. And then I would add and subparagraph C, after taking into consideration the expressed desires of private property owners within the Ulid area. That's, that's the best I can do on short notice.
Say it one more time, please.
Subparagraph C, after taking into consideration the expressed desires of private property owners within the Ulid area.
All right, I believe legal counsel has provided you some potential wording, Mr. Elwood or Mr. Rosen. That is, that would still be in your court if you're looking to make that an amendment. Or I should say to offer an amendment.
Right. Motion to amend.
Um. I can probably work with that with the comments that the mayor made as well tonight. I think that's a reasonable. And I think that's also honestly as close as we're going to get tonight.
Are you?
No, I think.
Motion to amend.
Mr. Kenyon's language would be acceptable to me. Uh, Mr. Elwood, please weigh in as well and Mr. God Health, I think, or the others that had some concerns tonight, please.
You're muted, Mr. Elwood. Mr. God Health, call on you first. I saw your hand.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was computers unmuted and muting and muting in the middle. Sorry, kid. Um, I'm okay with the motion as it stands, along with the statement that the mayor uh, presented. I do appreciate, excuse me, that statement made.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood?
I I agree and and I appreciate it with all the conversation and and thank you to my colleagues for considering this and and accepting the motion. Hopefully, Mr. Lautenbach will. Um, and then I'm happy to move forward. Thank you.
All right. Well, I still need then one of you.
Gotta make the motion, guys.
I can't remember what the whole motion was. I couldn't write it down fast enough.
Uh, you want to repeat it then? I'm sure Mr. Kenyon wrote it down.
So it would be at the very end of section one, we would strike the word and before subparagraph B. And then at the very end of section one, it would say and subparagraph C, after taking into consideration the expressed desires of the private property owners within the Ulid area. This, this would be the the motion would be to amend the resolution to add subparagraph C.
Thank you.
I even I can remember that. One of you guys want to make that motion and second it?
Um, I I make a motion to amend with section C.
As presented.
As presented, thank you.
Second.
Second is a second, so I have a motion and a second to amend the language of the resolution to add subparagraph C, reading, after taking into consideration the expressed desire of private property owners within the Ulid area. Any further discussion? All right, let's take a vote on the amendment. This is not a friendly amendment, therefore we're not looking to the uh, motion makers. This stands alone. Uh, Mr. Lautenbach?
There are no friendly amendments. Jurassic Park, sorry. It was, uh, that's what we get in our training there. Um, so uh, the motion and second, do you need a vote on this, Your Honor?
We do.
Yes, on the motion to amend.
Go ahead. I I'm not running this show.
No, it's it's yours. I'm running the show. We have a motion and a second. The motion as read to add subparagraph C, I've called for your vote, doing a roll call.
Are you doing a roll call vote?
Doing a roll call, so I get it right.
I got you. Uh, sure.
Is that a yes?
Yes, let's just, let's just get her done.
All right. Um, um, Ms. Cullen?
I agree. Let's move on.
Uh, Ms. Miller?
An emphatic yes, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Elwood?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Jocelyn?
No.
Uh, Mr. God Help?
Yes, and thank you for the amendment, everybody, and trying to get this.
Vote only, please.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Uh, um, uh, Mr. Rosen, you're last.
Yes, and thank you.
All right, uh, motion carries six to one. Uh, Mr. Jocelyn, uh, voted no. All right, so now we move back to the main motion. Which I have to go and find again.
I would be happy to do another dramatic reading for the benefit of Mr. Elwood.
Oh, I think I think it is my turn. Let me see if I can get there for you.
Go right ahead.
The motion before you, as amended, is resolution to approve AB twenty-two dash zero one nine, authorizing the mayor to sign a petition in a form and content approved by the city attorney to include city-owned parcels within any proposed sewer Ulid in the Meadowbrook area, regardless of the actual boundaries of the proposed sewer Ulid, provided that A, the area of the proposed sewer Ulid as depicted on the petition includes the city-owned parcels. B, only after the petition is first signed by the owners of property constituting a majority of the private property within the area of the proposed sewer Ulid. And C, after taking into consideration the expressed desires of private property owners within the Ulid area. Think we can get there based on the last vote. All in favor?
Well, I don't, don't we have questions?
No, we don't. Are, are we, are we done with debate on the main? There's no more debate on the main motion?
We voted.
We voted on the amendment.
Do we want the city to be part of the Ulid?
Well, that's the motion that's now before us as a body that I believe is.
The main motion with the amendment is what is in front of you for a vote. I expected we could move with a, with a voice vote. If you would like, I can, I can still do a roll call.
But no, I think he was acting more, acting more of a point of order on, this is another new round of voting.
This is a new, this is a new round of, this is voting on the main motion as amended. Does that answer your question, Mr. God help?
Wasn't me.
Oh.
Mr. John. I, I, I thought there might point of, I thought there might be more debate on the amended motion. I'm happy to defer and then move straight to a vote, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll try. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, motion carries. It is unanimous. Woo. That was a little more fun than some of our other work that, that's, I, I, I think I am going to give a task to council uh to find if there's ever been a longer motion in Word count. Some research for you. Okay, with that, um, that ends the primary agenda for the night. We will move on to mayor council administrator concerns and initiatives. Mr. Loudenback?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, thank you, everybody, for your hard work on tonight's agenda. Uh, moving forward, uh, let's, uh, let's work together and see if we can get this thing up and running as soon as possible. I think, uh, the petitioners deserve it, the citizens deserve it, and, uh, it's, it's, uh, something well worth doing for our, uh, completion of our comprehensive plan. And don't forget, we're starting our new round of comprehensive plans, so we get to do this all over again. Everybody enthusiastic smile, applause. Yeah, that's great. That, Your Honor, thank you very much. Uh, have a good evening. Uh, I think we've had enough fun for one day.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Cullen?
Thank you, Mayor Rob. Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Uh, nothing tonight, Mayor Rob. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Elwood?
Thank you, and, and thank you to colleagues for, um, your patience and consideration and all that I've been pushing on with this. I appreciate that. Um, and I think it'll be a little bit more smooth sailing. Clearly, more debate will come. But hopefully, we impress to applicants and, and so forth and, and citizens that are concerned and affected. I know there's this thing about majority rule and all that, but it does, it does make sense that we take pause and we consider all angles of the discussion. So I appreciate your patience and consideration and all that you do. Thank you.
You, Mr. Jocelyn?
Uh, thanks. Appreciate the conversation. Uh, it might not be apparent, but I did attend an Association of Washington City's Great City Council meetings session this past weekend put on by uh, AWC. Um, I did want to acknowledge Mayor, your, uh, year-end letter, your year-end review. I very much appreciate you taking the time and effort. It was a rough year. Uh, but it shows a lot of, I think, dedication and concern that you all, that you bring, and I think the entire council brings to uh, this job in this place, and I thank you all very much for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. God help?
First off, I can't believe that it's the second month of twenty twenty-two. So it's going by really quick. Um, and the only point, thing I'd like to point out is, I know in the past a lot of people thought that we didn't debate things in open session, and they felt like we decided things um outside this kind of uh session. And it goes to show, there's reason for debate, and we should be debating and coming up with something that's good. Because at the end of it, I think what we do is we come up with the best legislative when we work together and try to, you know, get all of our concerns together. So I thank everybody, and I'm glad we came to a seven oh because that's exactly the way this one should be going.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, I'll go, uh, my fellow council member said, thank you, first of all. I appreciate my fellow council members indulging us tonight. I know this was a lengthy meeting. I apologize. I owe you all multiple beers for that. Um, but thank you mostly for your accommodations and willingness to compromise. I, I think as a council, we always are stronger when we find a way to meet in the middle. And I think it's on an issue like this, especially with the Ulid and being such a large, important issue to the city. Getting a seven oh vote is great. It gives the applicants some clarity, but also the residents, and I thank you for making that happen tonight and really do appreciate the time. I know it was a lengthy meeting, so thank you all.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Miller? Anything from staff?
Yes, uh, just a quick comment to, uh, to the council. Um, I think it was a very smart thing that we did keeping close to February. We continue uh to have additional cases of COVID within our staff. This thing isn't over with right now, and we're all working through it. So please have patience with us while we do without some of our critical members who are recuperating. But thank you for your support on this. We did the right thing.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna chop off about seventy-five percent of what I was going to share with the Republican council regarding uh recent initiatives, other things going on around us in the region. Um, and just bring it back to a couple, uh, items that we want to be sure that the citizens are aware of, and that is uh, as just mentioned, due to the high rates of COVID nineteen infections in the city, uh, we are continuing the closure of City Hall through the end of this month, which is amazingly enough, February. Uh, King County Conservation District is holding its annual board supervisor election. Online voting will be open for residents through February eighth, so just about a week left. To find out more about the four candidates running for position two and how to cast your vote electronically, please visit the news section of the city's website. To my knowledge, it's the only election held entirely online, um, certainly in this state. Uh, site work is expected to commence this week on the new River Run Apartment Project, a multifamily housing development located on the corner of four hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue Southeast and Southeast one hundred and thirty-sixth Street. That development will consist of approximately a hundred and twenty-eight units in eleven buildings and can and contains a clubhouse and office space. Twenty-eight of the new apartments will be designated as affordable housing for households earning eighty percent or less of the King County median income. Um, for those of you not as familiar with the map of the city or the streets, that's by the new Chinook lumberyard. Uh, finally, I encourage, uh, all of you to check out the news section of the city website for updated information on city happenings. Recent postings included the year-end review that was commented on, uh, earlier tonight uh on the activities of the city and the council decisions of the year uh for twenty-one and uh the Quarterly Business Bulletin, which features information on transportation and infrastructure improvements, community development projects, new businesses, city budget, community events. Lots of great information there. Um, much upgraded over the last two years. It's a, it's a wealth of information, and we encourage you to look frequently. So, uh, with that, Mr. Loudenback?
One last thing, Your Honor, and I'm sure you're all very aware of it. February fourth is Election Day. Make sure you fill out your ballots. There are several, uh, significant issues on the ballot, uh, involving our local school district. And, uh, if you want to make your voice, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Jocelyn, how many?
It's the eighth. Don't, don't commit election fraud, Ross.
If, if I tell them. We've seen those moves before, Ross.
Yeah, if I, if I tell them it's the fourth, they might actually get it done by the eighth.
That's right.
Wow, that's the reverse of what some have tried in the past, so we'll, we'll hold you for that one. But yes, thank you for, for, for the reminder that it is the eighth, is to have your ballot back uh for uh the current election cycle. And yes, it is the school district, which is in that ballot. Uh, Mr. Miller, are you holding your hand up?
I am. I almost forgot a very, very important comment. This has been his last meeting with us, so I wanted to say publicly, thank you for all of the hard work, the great messaging you've done, and what you've done for our public relations. It's been excellent and a great experience. Just wanted to get that out.
Thank you for getting that out there. Yep, going to be sorely missed. Thank you, council. And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
A second? You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Looks like lots of ayes. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
Bye.
Bye. Thank you.